We're just waiting on the fourth member so we have a quorum to be able to start. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It is Thursday, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. I will offer an opening prayer and then if you could all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful for all our many blessings, for the freedoms that we enjoy in this great land, and for the bounties of life that we have received. We're especially grateful for the moisture that we have received so far. We're also grateful for this peaceful valley that we live in and for the good people that reside here, and for the good works that we see them perform daily as they serve one another. We ask at this time that our minds might be clear that we may have an understanding of our responsibilities as we review these applications this evening. And we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Is it moved?
I have a motion by Member Little and a second by Member Bass. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Declaration of any conflicts of interest with any item on the agenda tonight. Now it is public comment time. We have two administrative items on our agenda. So now will be the time. We will not have an opportunity to talk about each individual item at the time they are brought forward. So if you have any comment you'd like to make regarding either agenda item, if you'd please come up and state your name and a comment that you'd like to address the Planning Commission.
First administrative item regarding Wildcat Storage. When you have good storage facilities in the county, you have neater yards. Oh, I have nothing to do with the company, by the way. I live in Morgan proper.
Do you state your name?
Howard Brinkerhoff. Two fifty east, two hundred north, Morgan. Ready?
Yeah, ready.
Okay, sorry about that. I have used these facilities actually extensively. Facilities owned by Wildcat Storage personally. Found them to be well-operated, clean, fair-priced, and security cameras everywhere. I was excited to hear that they're coming to this county because they have family members that while they're trying to figure out, young family members, how to buy housing here, they need to store things. And so that's a good opportunity to have that available. And so I, as a resident of the county, wholeheartedly support the development of that four-acre parcel down the road from Morgan. Thank you. And then Como Springs, excited to see that, whatever positive happens there in terms of enhancing recreational development for the county. I believe that's critical. I enjoyed Tuesday night reviewing the master plan for Morgan proper. Thought that was very far-sided, very well-developed. Having been the mayor of a neighboring small town called Altamont in eastern Utah, I see lots of similarities here. And let's see, forty years ago when I was the mayor, I instigated a master plan. And now I can see how beneficial it was to have that. And the community has benefited greatly from that. And Morgan Planning Commission, of course, Tuesday night moved that forward. That was awesome. And these, both of these will enhance what's happening in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our agenda item, Wildcat Storage Site Plan, discussion decision.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess it'll be item number six, maybe a bit of formatting error on the agenda. But item number six on tonight's agenda is for application twenty-three point zero four three. This is Wildcat Storage requesting site plan approval of a commercial storage unit complex in the Canyon View Commercial West area. The property is identified by the parcel numbers and serial numbers contained in your staff reports. But these are two lots we're discussing tonight. Located at fifty-eight thirty-three and fifty-eight forty-three, respectively, West Canyon View Place in Mountain Green. The applicant is Kelvin Judd. The property acreage is three point nine four acres combined between those two lots that I've discussed. And the general plan designates this area as commercial, with the additional designation for vehicle-oriented commercial, V O C. The zoning district is highway commercial. So in review, staff reviewed the landscape plan that shows over fifteen percent of the requirement from Morgan County Code, and that is displayed on their landscaping plans. They, the applicant submitted a photometric plan that meets the intent of our dark sky ordinance and has been reviewed by engineering. Parking was also assessed and they have enough parking spaces. The parking spaces you'll see are towards the front of the entrance to the, to the property and are largely for taking care of the office space that's closed by smaller office spaces, just mainly for staff on site and then for applicants or, well, customers that come in to register for, for those units. With everything required by the site planning and, and commercial design standards of our code, staff recommends approval. Madam Chair, one of our stipula-, one of the stipulations from Planning and Development Services was that we saw some areas that were indefensible on the site plan. Uh, area, areas that are dead zones. Staff stipulated that, that the applicant addressed those by either camera coverage or with, with lighting. Otherwise, planning, staff recommends approval. Madam Chair, and Josh and I can answer any questions you may have and the applicants in the audience tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions for staff? No. Yeah, I was asking the commission. Okay. No questions for staff? Maybe the applicant can come forward? Any questions?
Yeah, Kelvin Judd, applicant, happy to answer any questions. It's a permitted use in the highway commercial zone, so pretty straightforward. And back and forth dialing in the details if not everybody wanted to be nice. Like Howard mentioned, the other Wildcat storages are. This will be really good-looking facility. There's also an architectural review committee in this subdivision that stipulates some higher standards above even Morgan County exterior material standards just to make sure it looks good and doesn't look cheap. So, other than that, have to answer any, any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Metal roofs, correct? So that's part of the metal we have to approve?
Yeah.
And a little decorative metal that I could see the office or not?
Deciding, can we get a picture of the elevation?
Yeah, that, all those out. Yeah, it's got a couple different exterior materials kind of breaking up big, long walls that are just uniform. Yeah, that would be, that's probably the best overview of what it's going to look like. That, the building that says Wildcat Storage, that'll face old highway, the, the two-story building.
I have a question. Is it all enclosed by masonry wall?
I believe the fencing material is called out there. What is that, that black metal fence, is that right?
What, what kind of fencing do you have over by the, the house that's right next to you? Is that going to be that metal?
Yeah, that black wrought iron fence.
How tall is that fence?
Want to say six?
Six feet. And then you were aware of the dead zones that were brought up by staff?
Yeah, there's just a couple, kind of the way the parcel lays out, a couple odd corners. There's going to be security cameras and lighting everywhere anyway. But we just addressed those specific areas and said we're going to make sure there's a camera here, here, and here.
I don't know, I think that, well, it looks good to me.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sophie?
Can I make a motion, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Remove, we recommend approval to the County Commission for the Wildcat Storage Commercial Site Plan, application twenty-three point zero four three, allowing for the purpose, commercial development located at fifty-eight thirty-three and fifty-eight forty-three West Canyon View Circle in Mountain Green, based on the findings and the conditions listed in the staff report dated February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four.
And a motion by Member Little? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Miller. Any discussion? There we go. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries and I'll vote since there's just the four of us. Okay, the next item is the Como Springs Resort Site Plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This would be item number seven for tonight's agenda, application twenty-three point zero nine three. This application is a request for site plan approval for a recreational camp on the resort identified by the parcel number, the serial number in your meeting packet, and is approximately located at eight zero five East Como Springs Road in unincorporated Morgan County. The applicant is Grant McKay, uh, Mackay, I'm not sure what that's it. The area is thirty point one four acres. The general plan has this, has a designation for this parcel as agriculture and the zoning map reflects that. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all of our minimum code standards for site plans submittal. Uh, there were no, there were no comments from Morgan County Fire, the engineer or county surveyor. Uh, the city did a, a large portion of the review in light of the utilities coming from, from Morgan City for water in the sewer. And the, some context for the commission for maybe benefit of the public is a conditional use permit was granted for this application in October of two thousand and twenty-two. And then one of the stipulations for approval of that, of that C U P was to submit for site plan review. The applicant ended up appealing that decision and the appeals authority decided with the applicant that they wouldn't need to do the, the site plan submittal. However, the hearings officer, uh, sorry, excuse me, the, uh, representative of the applicant, along with our own county attorney, ended up deciding that submitting an application would be a good way to move forward. And the applicat-, the applicant has done so in, in good faith, following all of our minimum code requirements for, again, the submittal and for the site plan itself. With that, staff is recommending approval. And Josh and I can answer any questions you, you may have. And the representative of the applicant is in the audience tonight. Thank you.
I got one question, Jeremy. Is this, uh, for all three phases or just phase one?
So it is all on one lot and this application is for all three phases. Phase one contains more of the recreational vehicle park, of which the site plan is, is required for. Phase two contains more camping spots. Uh, and then phase three will include the restaurant and additional parking. But all are submitted to for approval tonight.
Uh, what's the deal with the, how to get in there? I feel like part of the discussion last year was about the bridge versus, was it one hundred?
Uh, one hundred south, I believe. Um, the hearings officer overturned that stipulation, meaning that we can't restrict access onto one hundred south. They've had historic access to that, so they can continue access there. They will need to address the bridge, um, as the bridge is substandard. But the County Commission gave them, I believe, three years. Um, and that time, that three years' time, uh, we discuss starts after County Commission approves the site plan.
And the applicant has indicated that they intend to use the bridge more than one hundred south, but for relatively large RVs and things like that, it will still be there as an access and especially for fire apparatus access road.
Do you have a map of the, up close of like phase one and then phase two? Like each phase individually?
And while that's being pulled up for a little further context, after the hearings officer had overturned some of the commission's stipulations, the, the county did file a petition for review to the district court. And at that point, the applicant's attorney reached out to me and, and we talked back and forth and were able to, um, come together to discuss a, a way to move forward more, um, to address some of the portions of our code that require the site plan. Most of that had already been submitted with the C U P. There were just a few outstanding issues. And so through that discussion, um, once again, they in good faith said, yes, we'll, we'll do that, even though the hearings officer didn't require that. And so, um, I thought that that was maybe a little more context of how that discussion came together, where we were brought together to, to keep negotiating.
Do we know the timeline on phase one versus phase two?
Uh, that'd be a question to ask the applicant.
So back to my, I guess, the question about site plan review. Have we just reviewed a site plan that had elevations? We don't have any elevations to look at for this site plan?
Um, no, because, uh, the, um, the RVs, I mean, they're vehicles that are brought in and parked on paths. The campgrounds, they'll probably be elevated, uh, tents or whatnot. But you'd want to ask the applicant that question. With regards to the, the restaurant, they'll need to meet all of our minimum codes requirements when it's designed.
And those requirements are like our, our commercial?
Well, this is an agriculture zone property, so technically we can't hold them to our commercial design standards because they don't relate to this kind of things.
So you can have a restaurant on agricultural property?
Yeah, um, an eight-twenty zone allows for public-private resorts, which includes, um, associated commercial uses that go along with that, uh, primary use of the resort.
Does we change this to a, a resort special district?
Not a resort special district. Um, my understanding is that the use was grandfathered in. They went through the C U P along with, uh, the design of the, the phases, things like that, uh, at the direction of staff. Um, our code at the same time included the site plan section. Uh, site plan section wasn't being enforced at the time, is my understanding.
It's up a little bit further, Jeremy. No, down. You went by it, I saw, I saw it when you went, keep going.
Yeah, keep going.
Keep going down.
It's right there.
There is private park of the additional use. Do you have any questions for the applicant's representative? No more for staff? Okay, no more questions or discussion? Ready for motion?
Actually, I have a question.
Okay.
Who approves the amount of spots? That's a lot of spots. And then also my other question was, was at the other end that was just on the screen.
So we don't have any design standards for RV parks except for what's in the conditional use permit section and the site plan submittal requirements? And as far as I know, we don't have a limitation to the number of spots they can fit.
What about like the, like if there was a?
That's true. I mean, there's minimum design requirements for the drives. That's for the parking and they've met that.
Can you go back to the map?
So the minimum, the minimum two-way drives are at least twenty-four feet and all of those are twenty-four feet. You have the pull-in spaces for the RV, the RVs. And then you have the campground portion further to the north. And then the, the restaurant will, with the additional parking to handle, the restaurant will come in the future.
And was there a decision made about, uh, long-term?
Um, all of that was, yeah, all of that was decided and discussed during the conditional use permit.
In Oc-, in two thousand and twenty-two?
October of two thousand and twenty-two, yeah. Uh, they actually modified the length of time that they were allowed to stay there above and beyond what our code allows. That was one of the specific stipulations that they approved.
Right, because we had a whole list of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay.
Some of those stipulations were thrown out by the hearings officer, some of them stood.
All right, those are my questions. Sorry, I guess I got one more question. Do we know if this road's going to be remained private or is it going to be?
Um, all the infrastructure on their site is private. The county's not going to own or maintain any of that. The only thing is the landscape, the landscaping. And there were stipulations for the landscaping. I'd have to double-check to see if those stipulations were thrown out by the hearings officer or not. But there was a management plan that was associated with that, so.
When did this, uh, hearing happen? I haven't known anything about it.
Uh, so October two thousand and twenty-two, they were approved by the County Commission with approximately eight or nine stipulations, if I remember correctly. Uh, thirty days later, on November seventeenth, they filed an appeal. Um, then over the course of the next two months, we got our hearings officer to agree to hear the appeal out of her contract. Um, and then over the course of the next six months, it was a discussion between hearing officer, the county, and the applicant. She made her final determination and then there was the counter appeals to the appeal, which led to the discussion. And then, um, late last year, they agreed to submit a site plan.
So besides, out of curiosity, uh, besides the site plan, what else did they want to appeal?
Um, there was, I'm, I'm trying to think. So they appealed the requirements for the site plan. I believe their, the decision to require the bond amount, because the bond amount was more than what the Planning Commission recommended, which was zero. And the County Commission added an amount, so they appealed that. And there were a couple stipulations that they were fine with that the hearings officer took off the table because the applicant agreed to them upfront. But I'd have to go back and read all the stipulations and go back through the hearings. Um, but I'd have to go back and read all the stipulations and go back through the hearings officer's decision.
Needs to say that's all said and done?
Yep, that's finished.
We're just here to look at the site and say?
They submitted the site plan, um, in good faith. The hearings officer determined that they didn't have to do that, but they did it anyway. Um, and it was to address a couple items that were not reviewed during the conditional use permit section, which was parking calculations, landscaping quantities, and, uh, just a couple other minor things.
Okay.
No questions?
Okay.
Ready for motion then?
Madam Chair, I move that we forward a positive recom-, are we, we're making a decision? We forward the? Um, forward a, I move that we recommend approval for, to the County Commission for the Como Springs Resort Site Plan Application two-three point zero nine three, allowing for the proposed recreational camp resort located at eight oh five East Como Springs Road in unincorporated Morgan County, based on the findings and the conditions listed in the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion by member Bass, second. Second by member Miller. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, any business or staff questions? I talked with Josh before the meeting and asked that the Mountain Green Peterson area plan be brought forward at our next meeting for a public hearing. May need to receive public input, not necessarily, we won't be making a decision, just to start the process.
Can we put in stardards too?
Do we want to, I don't know if we want to try them all at once or if we want to address them and, on different nights might be. Or?
It doesn't matter to me. I just, we just need to do ours.
Yeah, we're going to move it forward.
I said, did you get that, that I sent last week or a couple weeks ago?
I want you to review. That's what I want you to do. There's nothing to it.
He hasn't reviewed those. We've had the Peterson Mountain Green for a while, so just bring that forward. May need to receive public input and then we can start our discussion on it. That's all I have on that. Although I have a question for Garrett. When the hearing officer on the appeals, that's just the, that is a public meeting?
It wasn't. It was done via Teams or Zoom or Web app. It was, it was a virtual hearing. But it was recorded.
I just have a question. Should they be noticed on the public meeting notice site, state site? Is that, is it that type of meeting or it's not?
I don't think it is, but I can look into that.
Okay.
But we didn't do it.
Okay.
But it would be outside of the Open Meetings Act time to challenge that. But we should, I'll look into that to make sure that.
Okay, I'm just, just out of curiosity.
We didn't do it wrong for the future.
Out of curiosity, okay. No more questions? Staff? Okay, minutes. gotten all your changes in to Judy. entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve minutes.
Motion by member Bass, second.
Second.
Second by member Little. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a question, never mind. Back to number six.
Okay.
Um, where are we at with Shane's spot? Has it been posted? And the, my other, when are you moving to Mountain Green?
Uh, no, we have not advertised it yet.
Is that, how, how do we get that to happen?
Um, I'm going to ask the County Commission how they want to proceed. We still have the Planning Commission Reorganization text amendment on the, on the agendas.
I thought they were not wanting to do that anymore.
Uh, no, it's still on the agenda. There's discussion of two different, two different drafts. Um, and no decision has been made.
They kind of ran out of time at their last meeting.
Yep.
Meeting was getting quite late.
What are the, what are the two options?
Um, if you want copies of them, I can send you copies of the text. Um, that way you can review them.
Okay, I move to adjourn. Okay, motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.